I call the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. You please join me for the pledge. Thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence. Thomas Keiers, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Eric Morgan, Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And William Angel, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. So I'm going to start off with a proclamation. Throughout our school buildings, school physical therapists have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School physical therapists of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school physical therapists of the North Syracuse Central School Districts and their accomplishments, I, Xavier Moody-Wusick, Vice President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare October 10th, 2024, as School Physical Therapist Day, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Can I get a second? Mr. Krupchev, thank you. We have Mr. John Corilla here is going to be accepting this proclamation on behalf of the unit. Awesome. All right, so next we have my good friend Assemblyman Al Sterpi here to present certificates to students participating in the Assemblyman's Summer Reading Challenge.
There we go. I've been getting lots of calls into my office wondering when these people are going to get their certificates. They've been very anxious this year, I guess. But tonight's the night, and we want to thank and congratulate not only the students, but maybe their parents too, who help make sure that they read for at least 15 minutes a day for 40 days during the summer. And you'll find, just like you did this summer, if you actually do things, instead of just talking about them or thinking about them, you'll be very successful in life, okay? So I'm going to read these names out, and if you are here, you come on up and I'll give you your certificate. Ruth Indic Conley. Maybe we start out with a no. Elias Lindstrom. Ryan Batista. Lucas Batista.
Good job, okay.
Tristan O'Toole. Emily Merriman, Miriam. Braylon Ackerman. Brooke Ackerman. Daniel Lloyd. Jonathan White. Oops, sorry. Benjamin Kittle. Gianna Marie Schell. Sophia Francesca Schell. Courtney Rupp. Andrew White. Dean Meca. Emma Shiner. Nassir Mohammed. Jada Mohammed. Nope. Owen White. Jackson Gibson. Oh, we're not running here. Danielle Gibson. Parker White. Last but not least, Riley Stuper. Is that everybody? We miss anybody? Okay, all right. What we'll do is, we can go outside and take a group picture, and then if you want, we could take individual photos, okay? Congratulations, everybody.
All right. So next, we are, we have Michael Listen, correct? LaSanne, we have Michael LaSanne here, who is a partner at Grossman-St. Amore. He's going to present the district's 2324 Independent Audit Report.
Push on, 10-plus years now, so I've been working with you as your auditor. I have a full team that works with me, unfortunately could not assist me today, a lot of people on vacation. Just want to say, your audits go extremely well. We have three separate audits we issue, you know, reports on, so all went extremely well. Don and his team, Vince, do an excellent job working through everything. So tonight's presentation is pretty short-winded because we walked through everything with the Audit Committee in full detail. We spent probably over an hour walking through everything in greater detail. So if there's any questions, feel free to stop me, but I'll fly through this fairly quickly, so. All right, so we have a pretty quick executive summary. I already said, we have what we call unmodified audit opinion. That's the cleanest type of audit opinion you can issue. You know, consistent with the previous years, unmodified, no issues, no concerns. If you've seen in your packages, the audit of financial statements are close to 70-plus pages long, so there's a lot of information that goes in there that we have to look at. So just hats off to the entire team. So communications, you know, we talk about auditor responsibilities, management responsibilities. None of those have really changed in the past years. Basically, our responsibilities in auditors is just to give you an audit opinion on those statements. So manager takes responsibility for internal controls and processes and providing us with all the necessary information throughout the course of the audit. So control observations and recommendations. No material weaknesses or nothing to report to the board. Excellent, so we do internal control type work throughout the district, you know, cash receipts, disbursements, testing internal controls and processes. We didn't find any issues or concerns to report to the board. Excellent there. Next slide talks about some of the bigger hitting numbers. The TRS liability, this is the proportionate share of your liability for the state pension system. So if you look past the last couple of years, you can see it's about $4.5 million now. But that represents the proportionate share as if, you know, as of June 30th, 2024, is if the state decided to stop, you'd actually have to pay $4.5 million. Look back three years, in 2022, it was a $67 million asset because the state system was overfunded on an actual basis. One of my slides has up, you know, right after this, talks about that and how well New York State funds it. So really, from a big picture from school district, you're not going to be worried about having a big number come down the pipeline because the state has done a nice job of making sure they could forecast it out, that you can budget for that properly. ERS liability is a little different, that's the employees. You can see it's about $10.4 million. But basically, you see, that's the proportionate share of your liability again. That's a very small percentage because it's a billion-dollar liability. You'll see that in the next slide. But you can see the positive returns of both TRS and ERS. One's measured as of June 30th, '23, one's measured as of March 31st, 2024. You can see their returns are 8.99 versus 11.34. So the state systems are doing extremely well, which then helps determine the contributions for you, so. Really, you don't have much say into, you know, how they account for the pensions, but, you know, you do have to record that liability. Next slide is one, you know, a few folks on the Audit Committee really enjoy looking at this. As you look at New York State, this is the teacher system, and that's actually in, you can see the big numbers. I picked the five biggest states. You can see New York State is generally about 99.17% funded. So you think about that $4 million liability in the last slide, that $4 million represents your little percentage of that 80, 83% that's not funded, is that big of a number. So that's the proportionate share. But you look at like a state of Illinois, has, you know, these are all teacher systems. They're only at 44%. Ultimately, at some point, the governments are going to have to pay up, meaning the school districts, towns, villages are going to have to pay into that system. So, so New York's done a nice job of kind of maintaining that. You do have up and down years, but you can see, you know, it's a nice slide to show that across, especially the big, what I'll call the big five, you know, teachers', you know, systems across the US. So, so don't be Illinois. Unfortunately, ultimately, they estimate $151 bill dollars to be paid at some point, and 44% means that's all the, all the monies they have in there. Ultimately, they have to fund that at some point in the state of Illinois. The next slide is, you know, a little bit more executive summary. As you recall, we have the OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits. What that is, is actual determine, that's your, you know, long-term benefits for retirees and current employees. So what your actuaries do is forecast it out what the current liability is. You can't fund that on a cash basis, unlike the pension system. So what that shows is it dropped down a little bit from $333 million down to $332 million. A lot of that's just actual science, and every two years, the actuaries have to do a full evaluation of that. So that'll be adjusted next year. But a lot of that's based on just assumptions that the actuaries use, discount rates, long-term healthcare rates. So what that ultimately represents is about $300 million liability the school district has that at the, at some point, you're going to be paid out over time. And you can see the numbers dropped down a little bit because of, you know, changes in benefit terms and some actual science, some healthcare trends. You can see it dropped down to almost $429 million four years ago, down to $332. So a big liability, but you can't fund it. You can't put away money, can't put a reserve set aside. The state of New York has made that very clear. So unfortunately, it's a big liability, doesn't impact your fund balances. So just to point that out. The general fund, I'll just talk about some of the bigger highlights. Revenue's at $200 million, expenses $186. Inner fund transfers, which goes across different funds, shows that you have a net increase to your total fund balance at general fund of $10.7 million. What your team has done is actually set aside reserves, part of that $10.7 million is, you know, up in your reserves. You know, the different types of reserves, you can put money inside. So by having an increase there, you're able to set aside further reserves to keep you pretty close to the 4% limitation, which you're just a hair over. Almost all my school districts are way over the 4% limitation. Some are at double digits, you guys are 4.75%. So great job setting aside reserves, a great job with the overall results. As I mentioned earlier, observation recommendations, just routine items. We speak to both Don and Vince throughout the course of the audits with certain things we see, but nothing of, you know, what I'll call reportable, you know, to the board or have to formally written in a management letter. Next slide is about the other, other type of audits we do. So the single audit is the federal grant compliance audit. So you can see a total federal expenditures of about $15.7 million versus 17 last year. This is a federal compliance audit. So what we have to do is special procedures, and every year, we have different types of programs we test based on, you know, materiality and different factors. So you can see it was the child nutrition cluster, which is, you know, what I call the food service. So that, there's a bunch of compliance eyes we have to test and go through. And it's a little different than a financial statement audit, but if we find issues with the compliance, what happens is you actually have to send that money back to the state of New York. Good for you, we have no compliance issues to report. So it's always, I explain to boards, is if we find a compliance issue, it's always after the fact, after you spent it, meaning you've already spent the money, meaning you're sending back money you really don't have. So it's good not to have any type of findings there. So guys have done a great job. We rotate the programs. Like I said, I've been working with you for a number of years. We can't test the same one year, year to year, just because it's really clean. We have to purposely rotate different programs, so. But, you know, very good results there. The last report is on the extra classroom activities. These are where the kids, the clubs, you know, put together, you know, cash receipts and disbursements. We do have a modified audit opinion here for the cash receipts, similar to all our school districts. We basically say, we know the cash that's put into the books, but, you know, if there's something not there, it's not going to, it's going to be difficult for us to see. You guys have actually done a nice job, your kids, the faculty, you know, keeping up on all the policies, procedures, and making sure. So we really had nothing to even talk about internal control weaknesses because people are following all the processes you guys established.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mike. I remember when we first started, I was on the audit committee. But I think your people that come in and work realize that Don's, Keegan's office is second to none. Vince Love and everybody that's in that office helps us to make the kind of audit we had. Thank you.
I want to second that too. You know, one of our largest school districts, you have a lot of moving parts and a lot of great people to come together between food service and Wendy and Amy and everywhere. And then in the course of the year, they do reach out to us on questions. So there's no really surprises come end of the year for audits. So Don and Vince, they're great at reaching out to us on any questions they have. So makes your audit go very extremely smooth.
Any else? Thank you so much, as much, as always, it's very much appreciated.
All right, we're so quick, I could talk an hour.
Oh, it's okay. It's much appreciated. All right. So next, we have on the docket, we have Allen Road Elementary School Principal Emily LaFontaine, and members of the BPT, excuse me, will present the 2425 Building Planning Team Plan. I think Don has another chair for you guys. Mr. Keegan, there we go. I think this is a record.
Good evening, I'm Emily LaFontaine, the principal of Allen Road. Tonight, I have Amber Coker, a third grade teacher, Danielle Swinton, a social worker, Rachel Khan, an AIS provider, Antonia Buetti, a fourth grade teacher, our BPT chair, Tricia Burns, third grade teacher, and Jan Jerome kindergarten teacher. Allen Road this year currently has 328 students. We have an additional second grade section and a .5 liberty for a full-time position at Allen Road this year. We stayed the same with five CTD rooms. Our students with disabilities increased from 18.5 to 24%. Our special class programs in the 811 remain the same with two rooms, and our free and reduced is 36%. I'll give everybody a moment to read our mission and vision. Our first goal around MTSS, by June 2025, Allen Road will fully implement a multi-tiered system of support framework, providing evidence-based interventions in math, reading, and attendance to all students as measured by the intervention implementation data, student outcome data, resulting in 5% increase in reading and math proficiency and a 3% decrease in chronic absenteeism. Our strategy is to get there. All members will meet weekly in their collaborative teams to review ongoing cognitive assessments, data and attendance, ELA and math, to design and implement interventions for all students.
As you can see, last year, we crushed our attendance goal, and we plan on doing it again this year by decreasing our chronic absenteeism from 13.4% down to 10%. We plan on doing that by re-engaging families using their preferred methods of communication to figure out their barriers to regular attendance, using biweekly attendance data to monitor and implement interventions using all support staff. Attendance will be a standing agenda item at BPT, collaborative team time, and our biweekly STAR meetings. Administration will communicate the importance of attendance to families. We'll do home visits as appropriate and have ongoing communication with parents. There'll be daily phone calls to our absent students. Our building-wide attendance will be displayed in common areas so everybody knows our goals and where we are. We'll have assemblies on half-days to boost our attendance on those days, and we'll also celebrate students that have a certain percentage of 92.5% attendance or higher.
Okay, hold on. As you can see, we have two graphs illustrating our reading proficiency data over the past couple of years. On the left, we have our AMES Web data with a goal in spring 2025 of 56% of our students proficient in reading. On the right, we have data collected from New York State with a goal in 2025 of 36.5% of our students proficient in reading. So our reading proficiency goal. By June 2025 at Allen Road, we will increase our AMES Web total composite reading score by 5%, as well as increase our New York State reading proficiency from 36% to 41%. To track our growth towards these goals, we're going to use the measurement tools, AMES Web Plus Composite Reading Score, as well as the New York State Grade III and IV ELA assessments. To help us reach this goal, we're going to implement multiple building-level strategies. These include identifying areas of reteach and extension based on common assessments within our guaranteed and viable curriculum, interventions based on common assessment, as well as progress monitoring to more closely support our students' growth within the curriculum, having K through 4 what I need now or when, building-wide intervention blocks based on student data, having our student support team collaborate and goal set for students in areas of need, having collaborative team time consistent with our four questions, social studies tie-ins within our ELA curriculum, utilization of our Title I funds for Family Literacy Night, as well as differentiate digital platforms.
We have our math data based on our 2024 spring data from AMES Web and our New York State assessments. Our goal for math is to increase proficiency on both by 5%. So bring our AMES Web from 51% proficiency to 56, and our New York State math proficiency from 38 to 43. And our New York State math proficiency from 38 to 43. We're going to use the AmesWeb as well on our Grade 3 and 4 math assessments. And some strategies we're going to use are instructional coaches, AIS teachers, and ITA will implement interventions and monitor progress. Grade 1 through 4 win intervention blocks, trial math intervention, math lab classrooms, student support team process to monitor students' response to intervention. Building wide observations and walkthroughs to enhance our math practice. Continuation of Into Math Tier 1 program and common assessments. And our collaborative team time will be consistent with.
For our emotional competencies goal, we plan on decreasing the BiMath social awareness data from 18% in the high-risk category down to 15%. And we plan on doing that by having daily personalized greetings by staff, but really emphasizing having the students return those greetings to us. We have more staff that are now trained in therapeutic crisis intervention for schools. We'll continue to provide the second step curriculum to all K through 4 classrooms. We'll have McMahon Ryan come in and provide their High Five Safety Program. Bi-weekly STAR meetings, and then also a school-wide focus on active listening skills.
A few of the highlights of some of the exciting things that have happened at Allen Road this year. First of all, we had Jill Welsh, a teacher, a former Allen Road teacher who's now at Gillette. Also a parent who came in to share her book that she wrote titled, It's Not Just a Rock. She shared her touching story about the power of love, family, and treasuring each moment. That was amazing, by the way. Also, we had the SU soccer team came to visit our kindergarten and second grades classrooms. They worked on STEM activities with our students and worked in small groups. We're expanding the program this year to K-4. And we're also hoping to include the women's soccer team as well. We also had our fourth grade down at the bottom. That picture shows the Farm-to-Table Program that our fourth graders worked with local farmers with the help of Allen Road Food Service. And the students learned about growing vegetables, how to prepare them, and learned some new recipes. They were also allowed to taste test these vegetables. We also had our third grade participated in a community give-back program. We rise above the streets. The students made sandwiches for the homeless people in our area. And also wrote inspirational messages to them. They were delivered through the Saturday Sandwich Program. And final, at the bottom, we had our first ever kindergarten camp this year, and it was a big success. The camp was designed to familiarize soon-to-be kindergarten students with the local, excuse me, the school environment, daily routines, and foundational academic and social skills necessary for a successful start to the school year. It was highly bestful and we had a much, we hope, a smoother start to our September back-to-school, first day of school in kindergarten.
I just wanted to make a comment that the improvement in chronic absenteeism is great. So you all are doing a great job. Clearly the stuff you're doing is working. So thank you.
I actually had a question, going back to the chronic absenteeism as well. I just wanted some clarification on something because one phrase really stuck out to me. You said re-engage families using preferred methods of communication. Could you expand on that? Like, what does that look like?
Parents want to come in and meet face-to-face if they prefer home visits, phone calls, kind of whichever is more comfortable and best for the parent.
Yeah, I just love that because, I mean, we all learn that all students don't learn the same and like all teachers don't teach the same. So obviously all parents don't parent the same. And so I, that just stuck out to me because you're meeting your parents where they are, where they are. I think that really goes, and it's showing. It's clearly that, it's clear that it's working. So good on you guys for really hunkering down on that.
Good question. So the kindergarten camp, is that like before, it's in the summer before kindergarten? Is it one day or a week or anybody can do it?
August this year. And it was district-wide. It was four mornings. The students came in. And it was, I think, around 14 hours that they were there. So like you could see that one picture, we brought them down to the cafeteria and we talked to them about this is where you will be eating lunch every day and even just to go over some of those rules of raise your hand if you ever need anything and there's lots of people there to help you. So yeah, overall, they had a lot of fun. And I think
Awesome. Thank you. That's, that's great you did that.
Am I correct in that that was paid for with government funding? Yeah, same with summer school. So luckily we had that month. Couple of comments. Whose responsibility is it for making all the calling to parents on children that are chronic? Is that the nurse? Who is responsible for that?
So we engage in our district tiered process. So we ask that the teachers be the first line of defense. Families can communicate that on Parent Square or by email. And then should teachers continue to want support, they can reach out to social workers for our tier two. But ultimately, our office staff will call at a certain time if we haven't received a Parent Square, just to make sure people are where they need to be. And then the third part of the tiered system is the principal, and that is when tier one and tier two need a little bit more support. So that'll be a phone call or a parent visit on my end.
Sure you've called my neighbors.
I am active in our community, Mr. Crabtree.
They're not in school. Okay. Another thing, and it's in every school, and Cheryl will be in Lakeshore when I see it. Is there's not a gel between the state's testing scores and web, AmesWeb. AmesWeb, I think, is testing more of what we're doing in our classroom. And so I have a concern about that. We have a director of elementary ed. She's here tonight, so I know she'll look into if our curriculums are really gelling with the state test. I think it's gelling with AmesWeb, with our new reading program, math program, but I'm not so sure about state. But as you know, Allen Road is my neighbor. Matt lives a block away from me. And Josh over there is an Allen Road person. So we got three of us that live. And I love in the afternoon, when I sit outside, when the weather is nice and hear those kids' voices on the playground or getting on the bus. It's just a wonderful atmosphere at Allen Road. And I am very happy for all the people that are on your building planning team. I used to be on that. That's a lot of time consuming for you people, extra time. Thank you for what you do because you step up. And I love Allen Road. You know that. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. Good job, everyone. Thanks for doing what you're doing. I just wanted to ask your kindergarten numbers this year are great. I mean, I'm a proponent of the younger they are, the smaller that ratio needs to be. We sometimes have debate in, in the job that I'm at is would we want the numbers a little higher with the TA or the numbers lower and no TA? I'm curious on what would be your thought on that because I hear two different sides from teachers.
So this year, yes, our numbers are, we have, I believe, 14 and our four kindergarten classes. So we, we had kind of asked for a TA this and I was on the kindergarten district team and, you know, unfortunately, there just was not money in the budget to provide kindergarten TAs this year. And so this year, we, we kind of lucked out, I think, with our numbers at Allen, but it's not across the board in terms of the other schools in the district. But we're always open to the suggestion of TAs and I think if that's something that we could do in the future. But again, class, small class sizes really are very important at these young grades and especially kindergarten.
Especially those runners.
That's opened up a question because you are receiving now the children from Roxborough Road Elementary. No, sorry. No, from Bear Road for Grade 3. How many students have you received this year that we were not allowed to put into Bear Road? Do you know?
I believe roughly five, and we are receiving Rox Elementary students for our kindergarten class.
And that was my next question. How many for kindergarten?
I believe we've received at least three from the start of the school.
I'm not thrilled about this, but we, because of class sizes and stuff, administration made this decision. I don't like sending children to a school that is not their home-based school. Are they bused separately or how are they bused to your school?
They are rooted with other students and come in the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you guys. All right. Next, we have Lakeshore Road Elementary School Principal Tina Shimaluski and members of the Building Planning Team will present their 2425 BPT Plan. Did I get the name right? Okay. How do you say it? I was on the right track.
Sorry, we have 11 staff who travel daily between buildings. Do you want me to go back or we're okay? All right, our building demographics have changed slightly. So overall enrollment, we've lost one student and one staff member, which has resulted in an increase in some class sizes. Our free and reduced is up 2% from the previous year. And transient students usually stays about the same. We've had 55 in and 47 out. Last year, we housed the Boce Skate Program, which we do not have this year. A minute to read our mission and vision. I'll hand it over to Mary, who will discuss our MTSS goal.
Thanks, Tina. So this year, we are working in our collaborative team meetings to strengthen our win time. At every grade level, we've looked at the beginning of the year benchmark data from AmesWeb as well as our common assessments in ELA. We are beginning to group students based on need and we're working to find the appropriate intervention for those students who are in need of some skill building. These groups are meant to be fluid, meaning that students can flow in and out based on their response to that intervention. We are planning to look at our assessment data on a regular basis to ensure all of our students are being provided the appropriate intervention. Our students who score in the red, those are our students who are provided an intensive tier-three intervention in a group of three or less, five days a week. The students that scored in the yellow, these are the ones that we're talking about up here for our goal. These are sometimes what we refer to as our bubble kids, the ones that have the greatest potential to move into that green or proficient category. So a student growth percentile or an SGP is a measure that's used to evaluate a student's academic progress over time that which is relative to their peers. It indicates how much a student has grown academically compared to other students who started at the same academic level. So the ranking for that, the SGP is expressed as a percentile ranging from 1 to 99. For example, an SGP of 50 means the student's growth was greater than 50% of their peers who started at a similar level. Our goal is for students to have an SGP of 50 or more, which shows us that we are making progress in closing that achievement gap. The higher the SGP, the more growth the student makes. So SGP's will help us to identify students who are making significant progress and those who might need additional support or a change in intervention. This will help us to inform our instructional practices in win time. Our goal at Lakeshore is to increase the SGP in the spring for all of our students in the yellow from 56 to 60. And that score is an average across all five grade levels. So illustrated above are the supports that we offer to students, starting from tier one, supports that every student gets. And then funneling down into our tier two and tier three supports. We are looking at all aspects of the child, not just academics, but we're looking at their behavior patterns and their social, social, emotional needs. And at Lakeshore, we work every day to ensure that our students are given the appropriate level of support they need in order to thrive in our school.
All right. So to improve our graduation rate, we are tackling chronic absenteeism. Our goal is to have that go from 15% to 12%. As you can see, we stayed the same last year. We're going to continue with the strategies that we put in place, which are at-risk attendance flyers used across the district. We have good news postcards, so teachers are encouraged to use these postcards to send them home to really reinforce students coming to school, letting the families know that we've missed them when they're not there. We have our Promise Own Specialists and our Counseling Team, which work to engage students and families. We have some student incentives for those students that really struggle to get to school. Sometimes I will call home, we'll create a plan or have some kind of incentive set up for them at school, whether it's a lunch with me or bringing a friend to play a game during lunch. We've also had home visits. One thing I would love to see more of at the elementary level are clubs. We have PTO activities, but I think getting students involved in clubs at an early age and getting them involved in school. I think would just help kind of grow that love of learning and help them build those relationships at school. Goal number two, improve reading proficiency. So AmesWeb here shows, again, we stayed the same. That takes the average from grades K through 4. And then we have our New York State ELA proficiency, which takes the average of third and fourth grade students. You can see we dropped a percentage there. And to answer Bob's question from earlier, does it correlate, does the curriculum correlate to the New York State ELA test? I would say that it does. I think we do need more time with the program, but it definitely is rigorous. The work that students are doing does seem comparable to what's on the New York State test. One thing we've talked about in our BPT meetings is the stamina that students don't have for taking the test. So a strategy that we are looking into this year is possibly taking some of those tests that they do on paper and putting them on the computer so they can build up some stamina there. But as you can see, we have our grade-level team meetings with a focus on instruction and intervention. We are digging a little deeper with our win time with a focus on ELA. Each grade level has an ELA goal that they will be working on this year. We do have that tier one guaranteed and viable curriculum. We've had Donna Marie Norton come and meet with grades three and four. This year, we've invited her to meet with the whole BPT and really look at what our areas of weakness are and where we might challenge ourselves and push ourselves. Goal number two is to improve math proficiency. I feel like we do have a good handle on this at Lakeshore. We've seen a good increase over the years. I think this is attributed to the teachers' comfort with the math program. They really understand how math workshop works. They're pulling students at small group and they are comfortable with what they're teaching. And I think that's attributed to some of our success here. And I think that's attributed to some of our success here. Again, strategies for math. We have those same grade-level team meetings where we are discussing pacing and what we're teaching each week and where we might intervene. We have data and congruency meetings, which we include our academic intervention staff. Again, the guaranteed and viable curriculum. We do have math lab classrooms and math workshop number talks are happening in every classroom. Last year, I gave teachers a choice of having a math or ELA goal that they focused on. Like I said, this year, we're gonna try to put more of our eggs into the ELA basket, because I think that our math is really moving forward and we're making some good progress there. Hand it over to Katie.
Oh, it's green. That's good, right? Okay. So last year, our goal was to improve the emotional competency for all students. 75% in all five areas of the core companies on the BIMAS data. So at the elementary level, the BIMAS is completed by the classroom teacher two times a year. Once in the fall, usually from mid-October to mid-November, and then again in the spring, usually mid-May to mid-June. Set this goal with the idea of working on character, our positivity project, all of those things around these five traits on the BIMAS. And you can see the data shows that in almost all areas, we made growth. In some areas, we made some pretty great growth. Responsible decision-making, we went up 11%. Self-management, we went up 7%. You'll see that one area, self-awareness. It says that we went down. When you dive into the BIMAS data and you look at what questions actually map onto that, my opinion is that the questions don't really map onto what self-awareness is. For example, one of the questions is, "Student appeared depressed." Well, a student can appear depressed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't self-aware. So I'm not sure that that's the most reliable measure of self-awareness. But overall, we did show some great improvement in this area. And then some of the strategies, you can see, we tied our school-wide behavior traits. We did brag tags. We had recognizing positive behavior on the announcements. We rolled out zones of regulation and second-step lessons, K through two, positive postcards at home. And we did a bit of work with restorative circles last year in some of our classrooms that were struggling, and that was something we hope to continue more this year. Our second goal, using the BIMAS data, was to improve the social functioning of all students, with 87% of students demonstrating as typical or strength. We were at 82% at, and we set the goal. You can see our social went up by 1% to 83%. Our academic functioning went from 82% to 87%, so that was a 5% increase, which was good to see. For our social functioning, we want to continue on with that goal for this year. But what we'd like to do is we'd like to look at the students that I kind of call the bubble students. So those are your students that are high-scoring but still in the red. So when you look at the BIMAS data and you look at those students, if those students were to jump from red to green, it would put us at over 90% of our students being typical or strength in both social and academic functioning. Our goal this year as a team is to target those students. So make the teachers more aware of those students and see if we really target them, if our data will come where we want it to be, more so than when we do school-wide interventions. So we're gonna keep our school-wide interventions and we're gonna add on those more targeted interventions for students. And that just might be the teacher being aware and spending a little bit more time with that.
I realized that we didn't have a celebration slide, but we do have celebrations at Lake Shore Road. You know, we have a lot of exciting PTO events. One of my favorite events is our Career and Science Fair that we do each year. It is voluntary, and students really get to thrive with what they are interested in learning. So that's exciting for me. I think digging deeper into the CKLA curriculum, we do a lot of celebrations with that. They just made pancakes. We had Pancake Day. We do kings and queens, and we have a lot of fun. As you know, we're in a new building, so a lot of transitions and a lot of new challenges coming. Well, I think. So what questions do you have for us?
I'll start. So thank you very much for this. I really, we really appreciate this. And by the way, shameless plug, I'm a Lake Shore alum, so love Lake Shore, love seeing this happen. So we talk a lot about like social-emotional learning, social-emotional awareness for kids. However, with the splitting up of the building, how is this social-emotional for the staff? That's kind of what I wanna, like, how is the gauge? I know it's gotta be a lot, gotta be stressful. You gotta change your commute. You gotta change your whole classroom around. You gotta change everything. So how is the overall mental health for our staff?
And I think that varies with who you ask, but we have staff here if you want to share how the transition.
I would say that the spaces that we have in all of the locations are great. So that's been really great. I know that our maintenance department and our custodial staff and all of that have done a fabulous job to make the locations as comfortable as they can be for us. So that's been really great. As far as the being separated, I think a lot of us are just saying that we can do pretty much anything for a year. And so we know it's not a long-term thing, and we know it has to happen. So we're just kind of approaching it with that mindset. We keep in contact with each other. We do have traveling teachers, so they go back and forth from the different locations. I think it's been hardest probably on them. Nobody, I travel a little bit, but not as much as, and Mary travels. Yeah, so she can speak to that aspect.
I travel between all three schools, which has proven to be incredibly difficult. I'm finding that I'm needed at the school that I'm not physically at. And so I kind of have a pulse on each group. Our teachers are incredible. They are forming their own community kind of where they are. They're leaning on each other, and it just kind of goes to show the relationships that they had built prior to them moving into those individual schools. But it is hard. We were, you know, together since the opening of Lake Shore, and then all of a sudden now we have three different schools. We really need to ensure that we make a conscious effort to kind of get everyone together throughout the year, so we're not coming back next year to, you know, a whole new, a whole new staff altogether again. So that's a great question. Thank you.
Do Zoom people in when we can. We had our BPT meeting, so anyone that could attend, they did come. I try to get out and visit the other buildings when I can. I went and I visited the kindergarten classrooms. I went and I visited the fourth-grade classroom, so it is nice to go and check in on people, even though they have a different principal that's overseeing them. I want them to know that they are still part of our community.
I would like to make a shout out to both Sarah Jones and to Melissa O'Donnell. They have been incredibly welcoming to our Lake Shore staff, so that was very, very much appreciated.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Mental health, I always like to do a mental health check, especially on our staff, because this is just such a circumstance that doesn't happen usually often. I mean, it might not happen in somebody's career, you know, so huge wrench, but I'm glad we're working through it. My other question pertains to absenteeism, kind of tying into we're being split up so much. Do you foresee that being in these different schools, these different buildings could possibly affect those absenteeism rates at any point? And have you gotten really any family feedback on really the buildings being split up?
I do, and that is a worry of mine. For example, I had a student the other day that missed the bus, and by the time they called the school, it had already been the child's lunchtime, and the parent said, "Well, I'm just, I'll just keep her at home then." So I do worry about that commute for students that do miss the bus. You know, possibly working with transportation, is there another way that we could still get the bus to pick them up? We have had parents that call us sooner rather than later. We've had buses turn around to go back and pick up students. I have heard that it is a long commute for some students. Some of our students don't get home until after 5:00. So that has been challenging, but we'll see. There's construction everywhere, so, you know, getting to where we are is a challenge.
I want to make just a couple of quick comments. One, the 11% growth in two years on the math scores is awesome. So congratulations to you all. Shout out to Ms. McLaughlin when I had her, a former teacher of mine. But I also wanted to, just something to highlight when you all come back next year. Talking about the chronic absenteeism, I'm interested to see, because, you know, we talk about it at every building, right? And I think that one of the things that's the hardest to do is to get kids who are consistently not coming to school to all of a sudden show up, right? And there's been a lot of growth, which is great. But I'm wondering, with the fact that you have students at different schools, especially longer commutes, when you come back next year to talk about what some of the challenges were and what some successes you had in getting creative to get kids to school? Because I think when we're looking at getting kids to school throughout the entire district, kind of having all of these different situations of different schools and things like that might be helpful for the other five elementary schools as well, figuring out how we can get more kids to show up to school. Because I know that it's hard. I know you all do a lot of good work on it, but it's not easy to do. So if you can keep that in mind for next year, I think it'd be a great opportunity.
Well, and just to go back to the year that it was higher, and I can't, let me see. Right here, yeah. So 2122, that was the year when I had Bear Road students. So it was difficult having them get to a new school as well, which is why, you know, I imagine there will be, it'll be interesting to see. It could go either way.
Yeah, I just had a question. You were commenting on the self-awareness and the BIMAS. Is there an easy feedback procedure with BIMAS? They ask you questions like at the end of the year, what you liked, what you didn't like? I'm just curious if there's a way to actually say to them, "Hey, you know, these questions really, at least we felt, weren't right." Really isn't? Okay.
Not that I'm aware, I should say, not that I'm aware of. The BIMAS is meant to be, not meant to be a diagnostic tool, so it tends to be very broad. It's only 30 questions.
Right.
So to use it in a more in-depth level, it's not the greatest. But it does catch kids that might be having difficulty. So as a screening measure, it is. I don't know of any way.
Well, I'm just curious, and obviously, I'm not in education, so I'm learning as I go on a lot of this stuff. I've been here for a while. I'm still learning as I go, so. But normally, at least in my experience, if it is a web-based application and it is software and so, normally they have a feedback process, so I was just curious, because, you know, sometimes, like you said, sometimes a question really isn't appropriate for that category, and they just don't know it. You know what I'm saying?
The measures like that, every so often, they will update, and they'll go back and they'll look at, "How are things going?" It's harder for them to update it because they have to keep it consistent in this. Not as, not by some of the other things.
All right. No, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe I'll go see if I can find a feedback button.
Okay.
There is one. I'll find it.
Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Crabtree. But Tina answered almost all my questions. Laverne and Shirley will never be the same. And that's, I don't know if the rest of the board saw it, but that was awesome. Talk about staff, staff, well, at the beginning of the year, what a great idea. My question, I just thought of it, and we go to all of the elementaries, and the high school. We've been doing this now two or three years. Chronic absenteeism, we've been doing reading and math, and we've been doing emotional. Is there another area, I don't want to see answered no, but when you get together with your elementary teachers, is there another area that the board needs to look at over and over and over? Might be something else that... Other with, Oliver, with your elementary principals. I am very pleased with where chronic absenteeism is. Paul and I traveled to conference. This school district way ahead of other schools in the state. I can say that for a fact. They're on 30%, 40%, and we're talking about some good school districts. But there must be something else that we could show growth to. Get out, Emily, you're back there too, so thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. All right, moving on to comments from the audience. I don't believe we have any. As always, though, they are highly appreciated and highly encouraged. Moving on to Board of Education Committee reports. Mr. Crabtree with Legislative? Or, excuse me, we have Mr. Herman with Legislative.
Yes, Mr. Crabtree was absent, and I defaulted to covering the Legislative Committee meeting last week. So it was primarily a fact-finding mission. We were trying to come up with some ideas of maybe some speakers who could come in to talk to us about things and some other categories or other ideas of things that we could discuss at the legislative meeting. So it was primarily a fact, like I said, a fact-finding mission. Most of the legislators that show up for the meeting were busy this month. We only had one representative from Senator Mannion, I believe, and it really wasn't much to say other than some of the highlights I'm gonna hit here in a few seconds. Our interim superintendent, Mike, was there. He got to see it for the first time, right? Have you ever been to a legislative meeting before?
Here.
Not here, okay.
I have been to legislative committee meetings, yes.
Okay, so, so I'm sure you'll have something to say when it's your turn, but what do you call it? Matt Cook, Superintendent for OC and Boce's, was there, and he pretty much uncovered the bases on the search for the new superintendent is going as well as expected. Can't really say a whole lot about it, but yes, he said it was going very smooth. And the board is actually on stage two of the process at this point. Phone ban in Albany is more than likely gonna be a budget item. So really don't expect any true solutions until probably around spring, is what he was telling us. The Rockefeller Center is doing a study on the foundation aid. And again, it is a study, so don't expect anything about foundation aid to be released until like December 1st, foundation aid. Of course, Albany is looking at reformatting the whole thing and reformulating it. So a lot of school districts are kind of up in the air until we find out what happens with that. There was some discussion about the Blue Ribbon Committee. That's about the regions and graduation requirements and so forth going on in the future. There were some questions about like whether the Apex Program that North Syracuse is involved in is gonna be affected greatly or not by the Blue Ribbon Committee. Unfortunately, right now, there's no true answers for any of that. They're just concerns, so. Lori Cook was able, one of our members was able to, excuse me, was able to go to the Workforce Development Collaboration Meeting with Mike Crime. Reported that it was an actually wonderful meeting, and there was some really good discussion. And it suggested that maybe she come back to another legislative meeting, and that should give us some in-depth details on what actually happened at that meeting. And then I was proud to see that we had four students showed up for the legislative meeting, though unfortunately, I don't have their actual names here. It was great to see them all, and I challenged them to come back the next meeting, so. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matt. That was, that was a great job, right? All right, Mark, on to you.
Wish I'd gone first. So our first policy committee meeting of the year will be on October 22nd.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's comments.
Yeah, so the last board meeting, I was actually at NISCUS, which is the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Conference. And that was held in Saratoga, attended some great workshops, one on wellness. And that was held in Saratoga, attended some great workshops, one on wellness for students in today's age. Another was graduates in the 20th century. Another was school can be, what school can be. It was, it was actually very interesting. Belonging during polarizing times, which was a strong session. It was, you know, more about students in this day and age and the difficulty of fitting in and and just so many different demographic backgrounds and things. And then another one that was similar was just an atmosphere for leaders and learners. Outstanding conference. Thank you for allowing me to attend that. And the Micron event that Matt mentioned, so on September 26th, there was an event held here that was with, between Micron representatives. It was representatives from AFT, American Federation of Teachers and NICE, New York State United Teachers. The presidents of each of those teachers' unions were here. Secretary of Commerce was here, Gia Ray Mondo. And Governor Kathy Hochul was here. So there was actually a panel up front and it had representatives from Micron, representatives from government, representatives from education. So there are teachers, technology teachers that are from actually North Syracuse, Watertown, Niagara Falls. Did I miss one, John? Or was it just those three districts? Just those three represented? And then we had a student representative from North Syracuse. And there was a, it was just outstanding dialogue. And really what it was all about was education, industry and government coming together and working together. And then it was about the curriculum that was being implemented into classrooms and into school buildings. And about hands-on, you know, workmanship and teaching and, you know, learning. It was, it was very good to listen to. It was some great dialogue between each of the teachers and then also our student representative, which was Lucas Levinasky. And he did a tremendous job. So Alexis Williams was our teacher rep and she was phenomenal. She is very articulate and very passionate. And so I was actually impressed by all the speakers. It was nice to listen to that. And hopefully more to come as we move forward. I also, let's see, last week attended Legislative Committee meeting, which was outstanding. Matt did a terrific job. The following evening, I attended a parent advisory committee meeting. And there was some very good dialogue there. We did talk about the potential of a cell phone ban. And we talked about the disconnected conference that was held in Albany the week before. And then what else did we talk about there, Mr. Leahy? We that school tool, yeah. Oh yeah, taking emails off our website and then the way parents can communicate with their teachers and, and you know, it's, it's very difficult right now, school of our size to leave all those email addresses up. We're, we're, we're opening ourselves up to be very vulnerable to phishing and and there's been a lot of that going on across the United States. And if you look, going to many schools' websites now, you will not find email addresses. So a lot of the communication is through Parent Square and/or the teachers individually reaching out to parents. And I mean, there's still going to be that communication. You can still use email. It's just they're not going to all be posted to the public. October 15th, they're going to come down. So and there's been communication out there for everyone. Coming up this Wednesday, October 9th, Mr. Keegan, myself and Matt Conti, the Director of Transportation, we're going to attend a school bus safety initiative program at the Civic Center. This is being run through Ryan McMahon, the County Executive. And what they're doing is they're going to allow for, they have four districts they selected to run a school bus safety program, which is attaching cameras to the arms of buses and trying to catch individuals who actually run through the red flashing lights on school buses. So it's going to be free for us to use. I don't know how many cameras there are going to be yet. We're going to learn a lot about it this Wednesday and then I'll report back. And then Thursday, which was mentioned, it's a physical therapist appreciation day. And Cindy Rank, we appreciate what you do for a district. And Rebecca Jones, I know you and her worked together. The young girl named Alex, and I don't know if we can pull that picture up, but Alex's mom said she would, we could show her if we can pull it up. But Alex has made great strides, a young lady, you know, our district who actually had a broken leg. And she couldn't do anything for three months and now has really been working hard and and she, she's proud of what she's done. And I know Cindy and Rebecca are also proud of what she has done. So just wanted to make mention of that and thank you for what you do. This Friday is half day for students. There's going to be senior class picture on that day, right? And then so that's October 11th and then a holiday on October 14th. So that's Columbus Day or Indigenous People Day. And then next week, very special, is Board Appreciation Week. And since we do not have a board meeting next week, we would like to recognize our board members for their service to the district. And remember, this is volunteer service. It's it's not an easy job and it can be thankless at times, but I must say that we have, we have an outstanding Board of Education with a bunch of individuals who really are here for the right reason, which is to do what is best for our students and the district. So thank you to each board member. Greatly appreciate your service to the district.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr.
And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Shito. I know the board really greatly appreciates that and it is volunteer and I think we do put a lot of time and effort in and, and it's nice to be, to be recognized. So thank you very much for that. Next, we have Board of Education comments.
I just want to make a brief comment saying I'm wholeheartedly in support of removing the staff emails. So thank you for looking into that and making that happen.
Okay, and I didn't really, again, can't go into much detail with this, but I was fortunate after, what do they call it? What was I here for? I don't know. Last week I was fortunate to be able, oh no, after, after our legislative meeting, we had a legislative meeting. And immediately after legislative meeting, we actually had a parent supervisory, you know, superintendent search meeting, right? Yeah, one of the, one of the focus groups. That's it. That's the word I was looking for, focus group, focus man. And yeah, we had, we had the parent focus group here in this room. And, and these parents really came up with some really good comments and some good questions. And, and Matt Cook did a really good job answering them the best he could. But I mean, they were, they were really a good group of people. And they came up with some really good ideas and some thoughts and questions. So I was, I was, I was glad that they allowed me to stay and listen. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt.
I wasn't here, but as Mike gives us a wonderful, I want to tell you, a Friday letter is amazing. I know Chris helps you and Don, but there's more, been more information in our Friday letter. And I appreciate that. Well, I get a Friday letter from Dr. Matt Cook. He was so impressed. He let the 11 board members, the BOSI's now, and the students met with him, answering questions about what kind of superintendent you want. So thank you to the student body at CNS. And I think he went to the junior high also, maybe in the middle schools. I don't know. But he let us know that he has never dealt with a senior, with a student body that was so. I want, that's the only thing I want to share tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Anybody else? Awesome. Moving on to one of my favorite parts of the night, we have student board member comments from Mazaria.
All right. Hello. Just going off of what Mr. Crabtree said, yeah, there was a student focus group. And it was a very diverse group of students. We all talked to Mr. Cook about kind of like what type of superintendent we wanted, what like, we wanted kind of like their past to look like and what we, like what type of initiatives, maybe they were engaging in the, in the past, like what's really important to students. So yeah, it was definitely a very productive conversation. It's funny because I was in that, I was in the meeting and I actually had an appointment. So I was just sitting there waiting for my mom to pick me up, but I was also very engaged in the conversation. And I had three things I wanted to mention. So the first thing I wanted to observe was Thursday, October 10th, obviously, school physical therapist appreciation day. And I feel like it's one of the services that I'm probably the most proud of that our school, our entire district offers. And if you don't require physical therapy, you might not even know that it's offered at many of, you know, our buildings. And I feel like if you know a physical therapist, if you know someone who has to receive those services, I think you should definitely appreciate them and appreciate, you know, how important it is. And next I want to talk about over the weekend, CNS High School's marching band traveled to Maryland. And as always, they made our district look great with first place in their division. And they won like best effect, best color guard. So, you know. And the last thing I want to talk about was in a district-wide initiative, I wanted to invite everyone to join, which was canned curse cancer, which is facilitated by a senior at my school by the name of Kevin Toms, who I want to thank. And this, it pretty much is like people district-wide, they collect cans and bottles in order to, and like they're donated and all the proceeds go towards cancer. I know the local nonprofit is called Griffin's Guardians. And I don't know if you ever heard of it, but Griffin Engel was a seven-year-old who unfortunately passed away from a rare form of brain cancer. And ever since then, his parents have been, you know, putting together the, this, this way to just give back to the community. And I know this event in itself serves to over 17 counties. You know, in New York and they work with the Galasano Children's Hospital. So if you want to participate in this event, start collecting your cans and bottles and just, you know, you can just put them in a bag and however many bags you, you know, you donate, you actually are put into like a raffle for a $230 gift card. And this event is October 26th and 27th. I think it's from 9:00 AM to pretty late. I think it's 2:00 PM or 5:00 PM. And it's in Griffin's Guardian. It's off of Brewerton and Cicero. And if you want more information on this, you can go to our district website and it'll be there. But just a big shout out to Griffin's Guardians and along with the senior at our school who facilitates this event by the name of Kevin Toms. So yeah, that's pretty much all the major events I wanted to go over. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. I know as the board does as well. Moving on to routine action items, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting on September 23rd. Can I get a motion to approve those? Mr. Crabtree, second from Amanda. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, sorry. First time. All in favor? Opposed? Got that out of the way. First one done. All right. Can I get a motion to approve B, C, and D? Mark? Second from Mr. Crabtree. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Moving on to routine action, E, Declaration of Marketable and Non-Marketable Surplus. Can I get a motion for that? From Dr. Kramer, Josh. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Moving on to discussion action items. A is the acceptance of the 2023-2024 Independent Audit Report. Can I get them for that? Amanda, Josh, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. B, adoption of the 2025-2026 Budget Process Timeline and Budget Calendar. This was in the Friday letter. Mark? Amanda? Questions? Go ahead, man.
Hey, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I, you know, last year we got a good overview. But with some of the tightenings that we're expecting again this year with the state, again, I do want to encourage everybody to talk to the legislatures, but also if we can see some more of the specifics, especially depending on what we get out of foundation aid and if we're short, just so we can kind of have a better idea of where we might have to see some cuts if things are not as sunshine and rainbows as we are hoping for them to be. That, that would be great because I know the state has been forecasting a possible difficult year. So that'd be great. Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Josh. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. C, Request for Approval of Consulting Agreement. This was also in the Friday letter. Mr., can I get a motion? We got Mr. Crabtree and we got Matt. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Resolution to create a co-curricular advisor positions for the Unified Club and two first Lego League Clubs, July in Roxborough. We got motion. We got from Josh. From Mandy? You got it. Nope, I was going to go to question.
I am very pleased because BOSI's is kind of the forefront with the Lego and that we're getting, using the money from, if I remember right, from Micron. That is in the foundation to do this at both our middle schools. This is a phenomenal program. And I'm also happy about having the unified, the unified club at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Next, we have Discussion Action Item E, Resolution to Create School Monitor Positions at Secondary Schools. The motion, Mandy, Dr. Kramer. Any questions?
All right. So we are adding them back like we do some of the teaching positions. So.
This was, we had kind of said at the end of the year, because I remember having questions and you basically said that this was going to happen. So I'm glad to see it follow through. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. F, Resolution to Create a 1.0 FTE Physical Therapist at North Syracuse Early Education Program. Motion from Mark, Mandy. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. G, Resolution to Create Transportation Positions. Can I get a motion, please? From Dr. Kramer, from Josh. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. H, Resolution to Create .5 Physical Therapist Position. Can I get a motion, please? Mandy, Dr. Kramer. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. I, Resolution to Create 1.0 Teaching Assistant at Smith Road Elementary School. May I get a motion, please? Dr. Kramer, Josh. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. J, Resolution for the Certification of Lead Evaluators for the Principals. Can I get a motion, please? Mandy? One from Mark, or excuse me, Matt, sorry, Mark. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We have two retirements to acknowledge. We have Eric Dudley, custodial worker, excuse me, custodial worker two retires with 26.8 years of service. And Colleen Rowe, typist one, retires with 21.7 years of service. Thank you so much for everything you've done for this district and we wish you a happy and healthy retirement. Onto Personnel Reports. Instructional Personnel Report. Can I get a motion to approve that, please? Josh, Dr. Kramer, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Port Staff Personnel Report. Can I get a motion, please? Andy, Josh? Can I get any questions, any comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Administrative Personnel Report. Can I get a motion? One from Mark, one from Matt. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. At this time, I will make a motion to go into Yes, congratulations. All right. At this time and a minute, I'm going to make a motion to move an executive session for the purposes of reviewing one negotiation matter with no action to follow, three legal matters with no action to follow. At this time in a minute, I'm going to make a motion to move an executive session for the purposes of reviewing one negotiation matter with no action to follow, three legal matters with no action to follow, four personnel matters with no action to follow, and one parental appeal with action to follow. Can I get a second, please? Josh, and can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Mandy, or excuse me, we got to vote. Do we, we have to vote on that. Did that one more time. All those in favor? Opposed. That is carried and a motion for adjournment. Josh, Mark. Motion, all those in favor? Opposed. That is carried. We are adjourned. 7:26.